avoid these drivers, and then we are faced with impassable snow piles and uneven ground. I'm so, insofar as one anti-trail council member has said, the park, it's not a park, would not be accessible to persons with disabilities. In this council person's latest nonexistent survey, how many people with disabilities are walking in the streets of Mayfield Heights? Just in case it's not clear, I am definitely in favor of this trail. Marsha Gisser, Longridge Road. Um, my name, I'm sorry. My name is Lindsay Saris and I live at sixty-five twenty-seven Longridge Road. I would like my statement to be read out loud at the council meeting on one twenty-four twenty-two and entered into public record. I am for the Gates Mills Trail. I have been a resident of this address for sixteen years. Since moving in my home, I have gotten married, have had three beautiful children, have due two dogs, and have made numerous friends with the neighborhood that are like family to me. I absolutely love this neighborhood. When the idea of fixing up Gates Mills Median was first announced, I was excited. I also, I have always admired the houses on the street because of the view of the median. It is so nice to look out and see nature at its finest. However, over the years, I feel that it has become a little dull. I admit I was not happy about the initial plans to build a park with all those amenities, but I, but I love, I love the idea of a simple trail. I believe this project is a good thing. It is a way for the city to promote healthy lifestyles. It is a way for the city to promote the beautification of the neighbor, neighborhood. It's what, it's a way to promote safety for the residents, and most importantly, it's a way for the city to promote a sense of community. These last couple of years have been really tough on many families in many ways, physically, emotionally, professionally, and financially. The one good thing that has come from the pandemic is that it has helped many people, especially me, slow down and focus more on the things that are important to them, their families, their homes, and their communities. By building these trails, I feel that the city is trying to do the same for this growing and forever-changing community. I am asking for the members of this council to consider the people whom are in favor of this project and not just the ones that are opposed. I truly believe that those that are opposed today will learn to love this plan. The people for this plan need your support. Please vote yes and support our community in the positive trends it is requesting to better everything this city stands for. Thank you, Lindsay Saris, Longridge Road. Finally, I have one last one. Dear Mayor and members of council, I understand that the trail along Gates Mills Boulevard will be under consideration at this evening's meeting. I am unable to attend to a previous commitment. I understand from Clerk Fagan that I may, I may request that a member reads my correspondence at the council meeting. I respectfully request that this be done this evening so that my support of the trail could be made public. Thank you in advance. I am dismayed at the progress on the connectivity in Mayfield Heights to date. When my family moved to the city a few years ago, key selling points of our address on Woodhawk were the near-term connectivity plans for the area, most particularly the improved crossings at the roundabout, the connections on Sam north to shopping and along Marcel to the park, and the Gates Mills Boulevard median. I am disappointed that only a very small and unconnected portion of this work, Marcel Underpass, has been completed, even though funds have been allocated via grants and approved to support said grants requests in the previous council meetings. Our young daughter has just mastered her bicycle, and we have nowhere to go from our street where she can safely ride with us legally supervising on our own bicycles. The city's own, own the space on Gates Mills Bulla, on Gates Mills Boulevard, and it should be put to the highest and best use and benefit of the greatest number of residents. I understand and applaud the effort you put into listing to the residents most affected by these changes and accommodating them with the most attractive and safe facility. When I drive by, I see many neighbors already utilizing the space for recreation purposes, but yet I understand some are still opposed to investing in a minor infrastructure improvement that would allow others to do the same. I urge you to consider the greater disconnected communities south of Marcel and support their right access to green space in the neighborhood via the Gates Mills Boulevard Trail and future connections to the amenities at the city park and the shopping district. I look forward to seeing the promises made and this connectivity plan kept. Sincerely, Sonia Jeski Barone, and she lives on Woodhawk Drive. Thank you for listening to the residents that have written in. We have one more. Mr. DeJohn.
It's, did you read Mr. Natalie's? I don't think you.
You know what? I didn't have that one. I told you to print that one off. Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Natalie and reside at sixty-four forty Woodhawk Drive. I am not in favor of the proposed, the proposed trail down Gates Mills Boulevard. I found the comments in the mayor's January twelfth Community Connection regarding the myths and truths about the trail worth commenting on. The first myth, I see in the, in the half-truth that the trail leads to everywhere for whom. The truth is, over sixty percent of Mayfield Heights residents live north of Mayfield Road. How does this trail serve these residents? How will these residents, the majority of Mayfield Heights residents, get to the new pool, the new community center, and other amenities off Marcel Road? They would have to cross a very dangerous Mayfield Road to access the amenities or this new trail. We aren't, why aren't you focused in how to get these residents access to the new amenities? Another half-truth presented was the trail will provide a link to the Sam Center sidewalks across from the traffic circle. The real truth is, no plans have been presented to show how this can safely be accomplished. The purpose of a roundabout is to allow traffic to flow smoothly, quickly, and continuously through the circular junction instead of using stop signs or traffic lights. They provide for the flow of traffic without the need to cut across traffic or stop abruptly for a light, stop sign, or for pedestrians crossing. The safety of those who would opt to seek the Sam Center sidewalks regardless of where a crosswalk is installed would be at risk, as would the safety of the hundreds of drivers traversing the circle daily. Another half-truth presented was that the trail will link up with other communities. This truth is not at all adjoining communities signed up to have trails down their medians. The truth is, several oppose them. Finally, an earlier myth that the majority of the funding for this trail would come from a state-provided grant. This myth and truth was omitted from the Community Connection article because the reality is that the amount provided by the grant was not seventy-five percent as reported, but may actually be much lower. Even in this num, even this number is under scrutiny as the grant application contained misinformation and lacked other key information that could pact grant approval. In closing, Mayfield Heights has eighteen thousand residents. The council has continued to rely on a flawed study completed by two percent of the population to continue their pursuit of trails and other projects for the city. Your stu, your study is not only statistically invalid, it is now dated. There are approximately five hundred to six hundred households living in and off of Gates Mills Boulevard. You should not make decisions that impact the tax base of eighteen thousand people by the response from so few residents for or against this trail. They voted for a tax increase that was to benefit all, and at no time did it say that the city would provide a walking trail to all the city's services and amenities.
Thank you, Mr. DeJohn. Is there any other correspondence from council? Okay. Next, we will, we will move to reports of officers, starting with the mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to take the time I have this evening to address the Gates Mills Boulevard Walking Trail. As you can see on the agenda, there is a new proposal. This time it's from AECOM for the administration and design of the project. As many questions were asked by residents during the public portion of our meeting, meetings, and as the public portion is not a time for questions and answers, I'd like to provide some answers to the questions. My lungs are still recovering. I appreciate, I apologize. First, there are concerns raised by council I would like to address. There was a question of cost for the administration and design raised by Mr. Monaco. In speaking with other firms, we were able to lower the total cost by thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. Mr. Monaco also asked that we survey the residents of Gates Mills Boulevard. We did. The result, the results were shared at our last meeting, thirty-one in favor and sixteen against. Another council concern was raised by Mr. DeJohn, and that was about ADA accessibility. The trail will be ADA accessible. By law, it must be. Now to some questions raised by residents, safety, that was a big concern. So we did get a letter from Chief Bitner. The Mayfield Heights Police Department is aware of the proposed walking trail on Gates Mills Boulevard. We are also aware of the safety concerns that have been made regarding the proposed trail. The police department is dedicated to the public safety of all residents who reside in the area of Gates Mills Boulevard, as well as the pedestrians who would utilize the proposed trail. If walking trails are implemented on Gates Mills Boulevard, the police department will continue to actively patrol the area, and members of our bicycle unit and auxiliary unit will patrol the trail during the summer months. We conducted a review of accident data for Gates Mills Boulevard in two thousand twenty-one. There were four motor vehicle accidents reported on Gates Mills Boulevard. Speed was not a contributing factor in any of these accidents. In addition, none involved pedestrians or bicycles. Only one of the four accidents involved an injury, and this accident was caused when someone backed out of a driveway and struck another vehicle traveling on Gates Mills Boulevard. The police department also conducted a survey with several other northeast Ohio police departments, including some cities with substantially higher population of residents than Mayfield Heights, including Mentor and Cleveland Heights. Police officers and other staff in the cities contacted were questioned about the safe, questioned, I should say, about the safety of their walking trails and the types of incidents that occur on the trails. None of the agencies contacted believe that the walking trails contributed to additional crime or could report any specific crimes due to the trails. One agency reported that juveniles occasionally loitered on their trail, however, that specific trail was adjacent to a school. Mayfield Village has a walking trail along Sam Center Road north of Wilson Mills. When asked about accidents involving pedestrians utilizing, utilizing the trail next to the busy roadway, the police officer contacted could only recall, could not recall any motor vehicle accidents on the trail. Although the police department respects the opinions of all residents and their concerns regarding the proposed trail, there are no indicators that a trail on Gates Mills Boulevard will cause any additional increase in crime. Then there was another concern, safety concern, and residents were wondering about a traffic study. So our traffic engineer, TMS engineers, responded with, it is uncommon for traffic safety studies to be performed when installing sidewalks or trails since it is recognized, it is a recognized improvement for both operations and safety by safety experts. Traffic studies have been performed when there is a defined crash problem with pedestrians bicyclists in order to show the improvements gained by installing such devices. So there were also questions about pedestrians and bicycles crossing at the proposed crosswalks. Will cars yield the right of way? How about the squads that use Gates Mills Boulevard, Boulevard and route to the hospital? Mayfield Road is a much busier and wider road than Gates Mills Boulevard, and cars, pedestrians, including those in wheelchairs, and squads share that intersection every day without incident. Proper crosswalks and signals, with proper crosswalks and signals, this will not be an issue. And another concern was maintenance. Currently, the Gates Mills Boulevard median is maintained by our service department. It will continue to be maintained by the service department, and it is incorporated in their budget to do so. This will mean trash pickups, snow removal, and grounds maintenance. Some residents voiced concerns about communication about the trail plan. We have been promoting the East Side Greenway Plan for the past four to five years. We have advertised the meetings, which sought input and feedback for the plan. There was also questions about the initial survey and the results. The nine hundred and sixty-eight responses are considered by survey companies to be a representative of amount to validate the results. So the, the timeline that was laid out goes back to one twenty-five sixteen, where Resolution two thousand sixteen dash nineteen authorized me, the mayor, to apply for, and if awarded, conduct the connectivity study. I believe Sean is going to elaborate on this timeline later. But we have been promoting meetings and feedback since, at least, for at least five years. Other questions that were raised, will taxes increase to cover maintenance? No, they will not. The green space on great, on Gates Mills Boulevard will be enhanced and beautified, not reduced. And the trail to Pepper Pike's current on-street trail and to the sidewalk on Sam Center Road prove is not a trail to nowhere. In closing, I would like to say that this is not just important to Mayfield Heights. I was on a NOAACA webinar today, and NOAACA determines how federal transportation dollars are spent in our area. Senator Sherrod Brown, Senator Rob Portman, Congresswoman Nancy Capter, and Chantel Brown, and Congressman Anthony Gonzalez were all on the call, and they addressed the audience. The call was about the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act. During Senator Brown's remarks, he mentioned he was concerned about opposition to the Mayfield Heights Trail and the effect it would have going forward. I ask council to please move forward this initial phase to allow the city to hire AECOM to do the design and administration of this important project, of which the overwhelming majority of residents in our city are in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This time, are there any questions for the mayor?
I do, but I will ask during the resolution.
Are there any other questions for the mayor? Director of Law, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Director of Finance, Mrs. Fagan.
Thank you. I also will pass on a formal report this evening.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. All right, we will now move to reports of committees, commissions, and boards. And I would like to announce the appointments for the new committees and boards for the next two years. I gave each of you an assignment based on your request. So the Building Committee will serve, be served by Mr. Monaco as the chair, and Mr. Mano will be the member. The Finance and Audit Committee will be, Mr. DeJohn will be the chair, and the member will be Mr. Baalastrella. Legislative Committee will be Mrs. Sabeta, and the member will be Mr. DeJohn. Public Works and Service Committee will be Mr. Baalastrella as the chair, and the member will be Mrs. Tressi. Recreation and Parks Committee will be Mr. Mano as the chair, and the member will be myself. Safety and Transportation Committee will be Mrs. Tressi as the chair, and the member will be Mr. Monaco. And the Board of Zoning Appeals, the mayor will appoint, and will you make your announcement?
Mrs. Sabeta.
So the Board of Zoning Appeals will be Mrs. Sabeta. Planning Commission was made at the last meeting, and the representative will be Mr. Baalastrella. Chagrin River Watershed will be Mrs. Sabeta, as you're still serving on that, and myself will, I will be on the Yucca Creek and continue that. And then the crack will be Mrs. Sabeta and Mrs. Snyder. Since these assignments are new, we will have no reports tonight except for Mrs. Sabeta, and she has had, attended the BZA meeting. Would you like to give the report now, or?
Thank you, Madam President. The board members elected unanimously Fred Kramer as chair and Matt Medic as vice chair. All members were present. There are several items on the agenda tonight, and I encourage the applicants to address council at the public portion. I have just received an email from Jeffrey Lankor, and he is on his way from Columbus, the weather, and he has gotten towed. He is the applicant on the first two.
Okay.
And he is asking that he's coming back the seventh, and he could plan to come back the fourteenth to, he cannot have anyone here. I did tell him that I would ask if we could put it on first reading, but he's coming back the seventh for the planning.
For all of his resolutions, he's asking that?
He has two. This was a unanimous decision.
By all of the board, yeah.
So. He would like to be here.
Okay. We can take that up as we come, as age come up, and if council feels we could put on first reading to give him that opportunity. Okay. We will now proceed to the public portion of the meeting. Pursuant to the city code, each person will be allotted five minutes to speak with a maximum of thirty minutes allotted for the entire public portion. If you are here in connection with an agenda item, this is your opportunity to address council. If you would like to be heard this evening and have not done so already, please fill out a form located at the back table at the public entrance of the city, of the council chamber. During the public portion, I will call each person wishing to speak to the podium. Please state your name and address for the record and speak clearly into the microphone. It is now eight thirty-four. I would like to call first Bernice Leiford, Leiford?
Hello. Hi, my name is Bernice Leifeld. I live at one four seven Pheasant Run. I have lived in Mayfield Heights for almost nine years. I didn't raise my kids here for a variety of reasons, but I intentionally bought into an area where I thought there'd be a diversity of backgrounds and ideas and great facilities to entice new residents. And I was traveling to Mayfield Heights and decided that I would like this to be my new home. It's a city where not only the amenities should reflect this, but where I hoped that the city council members would represent the public based on our wishes as a larger group and represent us accordingly. I am clearly in favor of Gates Mills Boulevard Trail. However, I agree that there are a lot of unanswered questions.
Hit the little button to make it green.
I hit it. Okay. I can project too, so I'm loud. I've worked with grants before. I know people are saying we should use the money for something else. That is not always an option. A lot of grants are restricted. I don't know about these grants from the sewer district or other places. City Council and the mayor can address that. But if we refuse this grant and it is not unrestricted, we've lost that money. We may have lost the opportunity to apply for further grants because that's how grants work. If you knock back an opportunity, you lose an option to apply in the future. Not all of them, but a lot of them. You say, you surveyed Gates Mills Boulevard residents, but you also surveyed the rest of the city, and they were overwhelmingly in favor of this. We have made changes. I believe we should readdress some of this, but we should look forward to it. I attended the previous town hall. Someone referred to unsavory characters walking along Gates Mills Boulevard if we build this trail. I guess I'm one of them. I've never been referred to as unsavory. I've been referred to as a lot of things, mainly in my youth, but unsavory is not one of them. Assertive, loud, proactive, but fair, and that's the way my friends consider me. And I was aghast to hear an email talking about, what was it? Trash heaven. I believe that is a really elite, entitled attitude to people less fortunate than some living in some of the larger homes in Mayfield Heights. Regardless of what we think, I believe that that name-calling and denigrating other people because of how or where they live should not be allowed into the record by any means at all. And I'm embarrassed, actually, that it's one of my Mayfield Heights co-residents that has that attitude. Let's look back for a minute. The opponent said, we don't want parking, so we remove parking. Okay? And then they said, we don't want trash cans, so we remove trash cans. And they said, we don't want lighting, so we remove lighting. And it's an ongoing, moving target. Every time we try and accommodate people, they try and find another reason to delay this or to derail it, and I feel that is something that needs to be addressed by council as we try to accommodate everyone's wishes. I suggested at the town hall that part of this includes a moratorium on some of the changes that people don't want. So if we say for thirty years, we will not revisit A, B, and C, that should put an end to some of those discussions. It's off the table. We're not going to look at it. We're not going to look at it for, and I'm just giving an example, thirty years. That should satisfy some of the opponents until they find another reason to ask you to change what everyone has voted on and negate that. So I think it is a valid option that should be considered. I'm kind of again disappointed, the, the nimby, the not-in-my-backyard attitude of some people. So if I don't want something, does that mean the entire city has to go without? I don't think that is a fair attitude. We voted on it, or we've surveyed it. The survey can be redone if you want to separate it, but it's got to be across the entire city, not hand-select Gates Mills Boulevard residents. If you only poll them, will they vote for a tax increase on themselves? Probably not, because they don't want it. But we have to look at the greater good of the city, and we have to look at the future of the city. And since living here, I learned that there was a previous mayor, I believe our community center is named after him, and he was quite well-known, and he also faced some unpopular decisions.
Mrs. Leiford? It's me, Diane.
Say that again?
I, I just, you hit five minutes, so in order for you to continue, I have to ask for a motion for, from council to let you continue.
All right, I've got like ten, thirty seconds.
Move to extended.
Second.
Second. All right.
Move by Mr. Baalastrella, second by Mr., thank you.
Thank you. He also faced some unpopular decisions. But during his leadership, we gained Hillcrest Hospital and Landerbrook Office Park and other things that certain people were against, but benefited the city as a whole, and we still benefit from that. He was interested in the long-term benefit for the city. So I'm going to look at all of you to compare yourself to him, and that's up to you to do it differently, but what is your legacy going to be? Is your legacy going to be, I'm going to look at the greater good for the entire city? Or is your legacy going to be, I'm going to bow down to the vocal minority? Only you can answer that, but you represent all of us. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you for your time. Ms. Caitlin Porapat, Porapat? I'm sorry. I don't mean to bash names here. I apologize.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Porapat. I'm really sad I have to go after that because that was wonderful. I live at sixty-six nineteen Kingswood Drive. My husband and I bought our house in April of this year. We came from Wickliffe. We didn't realize how much we would miss being able to walk places. In Wickliffe, we lived walking distance to the pool. We lived walking distance to the park. We walked every single day to our park. We moved to Kingswood, and we said, okay, we, we have a cul-de-sac, and that's great. And very quickly, with a four-year-old and a one-year-old, you realize that is not enough. My husband is more treacherous than me, and he'll go and walk the Boulevard with the girls and push the stroller on it, and it is near impossible. I'm not strong enough to push through the mud most of the time. So that is something that's huge for us. Having that trail would be huge for us. I know people have talked about safety concerns, and to be honest, the safety concerns I see every day driving on Gates Mills Boulevard is that I'm driving around people walking on the Boulevard, and that safety concern would be fixed with this trail. So that's something that would be huge. So I would really urge you guys to vote yes for the trail.
Thank you, Caitlin. Mr. Michael Buffa?
Do I need to give my address? Yeah. Michael Buffa.
Name and address.
In 6493 Gates Mills Boulevard. You know, I don't even understand why we've gotten here. And what I really don't like is how the city's being torn apart between ageism. And I think the city leaders are driving this. I think Sean in the mirror are driving some of this by putting us, putting us against each other. No one is against health. No one is against fitness. The issue here is this green space. It's a very small strip of land. And if it was just going to be a trail, and that's such a silly word. When I think of a trail, I think of nature. I think of someone going somewhere to be contemplated, relaxed. There's nothing relaxing about walking along Gates Mills Boulevard. It's not a trail. But some people want to use it for walking. Okay. But it's such a small space and I'm very concerned about safety, A. And I don't think, Mr. Mayor, you've covered that. We're concerned about maintenance on Mayfield Road that chipped up median that has dead trees in it. Some are cut down, some are still dead and standing, and there's a broken fountain. It looked beautiful for two years. It looks horrible now. That's what I don't want to see Gates Mills Boulevard turn into. And the track record is not good for the city. That's what I'm concerned about is that we're going to have chipped up infrastructure instead of green space. And I think it's a legitimate concern. And I live there. I think, you know, if you ask, you know, someone who lives on Wharton, "Do you want a trail?", they're going to say, "Yes, it sounds great." But I live there. I want to make sure that it's kept up. And I look at it every day. I'm not against people using it for, for health. And Stephen Litt, I called him on Friday after his, reading his article. And I asked him, I said, "Why are you so pro, pro this project?" And he told me that he was a biker. And so it means a lot to him. And he rides that path and he's very familiar with it. And I asked him, "Are you going to be riding on this trail?" And he wouldn't answer me. And the answer is he's not. Bikers are going to continue to use the street. And so the, the demand is so small. I hear people say that they're going to use it, but people are either using it today or they find, there's other things to do. I just don't understand why we are here tearing the city apart over this small little piece of land. And I don't know. It's, it's just silly. I'm flabbergasted that it's taken this much energy. And I have to tell you, no one has surveyed me. This, this talk about surveying Gates Mills Boulevard residents, no one came to my house or asked me my opinion. Maybe you already know it, but no one asked me. And there's been very little discussion with those of us that live there. So I don't know. I just, I've taken up of your time already. I thank you guys for the time that you've given me with phone calls and emails, but I just ask you to vote this thing down and move on to more important things in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buffa. Mr. Danielle Brown?
Hello. My wife and I live at 6472 Fairhaven Road. We've been there about 16 years. We moved to Mayfield Heights and we really like it. I've been to three, maybe four of these meetings. I think I've read every internet article, newspaper article, spoke to people, everything pro and con on this issue. Living one block away from Gates Mills Boulevard, I, my first thought was, well, if I lived on Gates Mills Boulevard, and I've always loved going down there because I like the houses, I like the property, I like the green space there. And I would imagine if I were to, a resident of Gates Mills Boulevard, I'd probably want to keep it as it is. And I don't blame those people who do. And personally, I would be against this and take the side of those who do not want the trail. For several reasons, safety is one big concern because I, I go out on Gates Mills Boulevard every single day and I see how people drive. And I see the number of cars that come speeding down there. And even the bicyclists, if you're an avid cyclist, you're not going to take a three-quarter mile walking path because they go fast. And an avid cyclist is going to go, if they're going west toward Cleveland, they're going to zip down Gates Mills Boulevard and get down to Pepper Pike and keep going. I, you know, I see them all day when, when the weather's nice, even when it's not so nice. Anyhow, you know, the emergency vehicles, I could see a problem with people trying to cross into that area. The parking doesn't concern me that much because I'm on Fairhaven, which is one block up. We, you know, they're going to, they're going to park on Long Ridge or Marshfield, probably. Are they going to use Fairhaven? If you've got the 250 people they expect, yeah, probably. But I don't think you're going to see that many. But I, I think this was, I've heard a lot of things in favor, but I think it wasn't considered the cost and all the aspects of it, even the accessibility to, the handicap like it's supposed to be by state law. How is that going to be accomplished? I think there are things that need to be looked at closer. And honestly, if I lived there, I wouldn't want to be looking at the thing. You're going to have a blinking light at Long Ridge? You're going to have one at Marshfield? I wouldn't want a light blinking by my house if I lived there. That would bother me. But you probably would need it. I don't know what else you're going to do. As far as accessibility to the circle, my God, I, I've had several occasions that I had to walk up toward Hillcrest or past the cemetery. I had a heck of a time getting around that circle. And I don't have that far to walk. But there's no sidewalk there. You get to the cemetery and then you come around to the convenience store. That's it. Sidewalk ends. And you have to watch yourself with the cars going around and trying to get, get down there going east or west. So I, for many reasons, and I think primarily the, I think it's going to affect property values on Gates Mills Boulevard. And I think the safety issues for those two reasons alone, I think it would be worth taking a much longer look at it before approving it. I don't know how soon you have to accept or reject this, this grant, but just because you have a green space, doesn't mean you have to develop it. And I have to, I have to say I stand in opposition to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Larry Fluckerty? Fluckerty?
Lou Hardy.
Lou Hardy.
Good evening. Larry Flurety here, resident of Woodhawk, 6548. I stood opposed to this when it was coming down our street. I stand opposed to it to this day. I've been in construction 30 years. I know the impact that it's going to create in this area. I see no long-term significant gains for the city for this improvement. We could use these dollars elsewhere. Short and sweet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flurety.
I'm sorry. Hi, my name is Erin Schenk. My address is 6786 Gates Mills Boulevard. I have two children, ages 10 and 12, and I do not feel it is safe for them to bike or walk on the Boulevard, which is, we can see from our house, unless they're with an adult, and then it is still scary. I agree with the person's letter who stated that a trail would only help to build community and would make this area safer. I believe connecting Mayfield Village to other trails nearby would benefit the area. Making Mayfield Village more walking and biking friendly is beneficial. I think it would benefit my own property value to have a walking path nearby. My kids constantly beg to be able to bike to stores nearby, but I worry that they will get hit by a distracted driver or a speeding driver. I myself am an avid biker and the Boulevard does not feel safe. Thank you. I am strongly in opposition, or I'm sorry, I'm strongly in support. And I hope that you support the trail. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Erin.
Good evening, members of council and mayor. I'm Sean McDermott, Cleveland Metro Parks, 4101 Fulton Parkway, Cleveland, Ohio, 44144. I am the chief planning and design officer for Cleveland Metro Parks and humbled to be before you tonight. We do support the effort for greater connectivity and the project before you tonight. Want to speak with just a little bit of perspective. We operate over 300 miles of trail. 120 of those miles are paved trail, exactly the type that is being proposed here to which you are considering. We saw over 20 million recreational visits in our Cleveland Metro Parks in 2021. A lot of that having to do with COVID and the need for people to get out of their homes and recreate. About 70% of folks who come to the park give us feedback that they come for a trail experience. They come to walk the trails, bike the trails, walk with family, and it is a very important aspect of who we are as a community and what we try and do in terms of connectivity. We build lots of trails. With 20 million visitors, we also get lots of feedback. In the past few years, we have built dozens and dozens of miles of trail. Here are some of the things we typically hear in terms of folks who may not be comfortable. They're concerned about safety, traffic, parking, reduction in property values. Who will use the trails? Also, a very big question. Some threaten litigation. They say the trails are to nowhere or they don't think that a demand exists. Here's what we find. We have these numbers, okay? Trails build community. Trails bind us together and they provide an outlet for all ages and abilities. They foster an active lifestyle. They actually increase safety. Putting eyes and ears on the road, putting eyes and ears on the trail, we can show you we do not have safety issues on our more than 300 miles of trail. We just don't. It's that simple. When folks use the trails, they police themselves. It is just that simple. Raising of property values. We have the numbers. We see that appropriately maintained trails, green space, open space and parks raises the proximate value of property anywhere from 5 to 20%. Okay? I would expect that the same would be true in this instance. We also see a marketing component where folks who live on or near these trail systems, you'll see when they go to sell their house, it's one of the first things that they're putting in that listing. And people are buying up these homes because they want to have the connectivity and the access to the trails. So we've seen that a lot, especially around Edgewater Park. So some specific examples, I know I'm short on time. Greystone Boulevard in Brexville. We built a trail immediately behind these homes on Valley Parkway in Brexville Reservation. We had pretty vehemently opposition. Some of those very people who opposed that trail were the first to ask to put a gate in their backyard, were the first to actually be using the trail, and then reached out and said, "You know what? We were wrong. We now are in full support. We're a trail user." That happened time and time again in Middleburg Heights, Lake the Lake Trail. The individual who was most vehemently opposed, a year later, came to our engineer, hugged him, told him that he changed their life, he lost 30 pounds, and he regained a relationship with his daughter because they could walk that trail every day. Redline Greenway in Cleveland, Tow Path Trail, also in Cleveland, a lot of opposition. Now that they're open, people have embraced the trail network. So we hope you make the right decision. We are in support of this and we're here to help along the way. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDermott.
Good evening. Annette Buffa Phillips. Pardon me. I live at 1401 West Minor Road, but I grew up on Gates Mills Boulevard. I've been a resident of this fine city for many years. I've seen growth. And this project, I have to say, first of all, I am opposed. This has divided our city. And Mr. McDermott, thank you for representing the Metro Parks, but this is a median strip, not a metro park. One of my main concerns is safety. There is no easy way to make this project safe. You can put your blinking lights. People who want their children to use this as a path still have to cross. Where are they going to do that safely? It doesn't happen. I have reached out to the Ohio Department of Natural Resources to find out exactly what this grant, how it was written, how it was presented. And I noticed something shocking. There were no pictures of the circle that encompasses the gas station, Woodhawk, and Gates Mills Boulevard, nor were there pictures of Cedar or Kingswood. I find that as a misrepresentation. When I looked at the ODNR's website, their mission statement states, "We are to ensure a balance between the wise use and protection of our natural resources for the benefit of all." This project was originally filled with amenities, as we all know. We've heard it. I'm not going to beat a dead horse. But Mayor DeSico, your words were written on November 20th in Cleveland.com and you were quoted as saying, "Once the trail is there, I think that's where the opportunity really comes up to say, 'Okay, you're using the trail now. What would you like to see that's not there?'" So this is going to be looked at again to add amenities. That's not what the people want. People who have a different opinion of mind that are pro, I've heard from all the letters, they want a simple trail. That's not what this is going to be. Your own words, Mayor. So my concern is, what are we doing? Why are we at this point? This is not a path to somewhere. It is a path to nowhere. You can call and ask the mayor's office of Pepper Pike if they have a trail. They've been, they've gone to get grants for it, but it is not approved, nor does it look like it will be. I talked to the mayor's office of Pepper Pike and they don't have any answer. So you're putting the cart before the horse. Tonight, I ask that you really consider, even those that say that they are for with a simple trail, that's not what they're going to get. We've heard it. And in your own words, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I have it quoted here. Anyone can research what I did and find this on Cleveland.com. We have to say no. Thank you.
Michelle?
Zabelky? Zabelky? That's okay. I don't wish to speak. I didn't know that's what I was signing. Signing here to say come in.
Okay. You sure you don't want to talk? No. We've got a lot of time here. Okay. Thank you. All right. Michael Molnar? Um, Michael Molnar?
Good evening, members of council. Thank you for taking the opportunity to hear me out today. I've never been in one of these before and it's been fascinating from the light complaint down to the emails. Just one suggestion box, maybe next time, start with the folks that are here versus the emails, but that's just me being hungry. So I just wanted to sort of express my opinion too. I have been born and raised in Mayfield Heights, grew up on Summit, walking with my parents to Mayland Shopping Center for movies and to Carol Drug for candies, things of that sort, Dairy Queen, Baskin Robbins, when that was still around. We moved to Woodhawk in 1987. We built one of the homes there. 6553 was our address. Lived there for 13 years before moving to Eastendale, where I've now lived for 21 years. The house was my mother's and now it's been mine since 2010. So very, very ingrained in the community. You know, I know that you're hearing a lot of opinions today. And throughout this entire process, I've learned a lot myself. I think it's important to listen to the folks that have been part of this community for a long period of time. I know there's several who have mentioned that they've been here for about 10 minutes. And, you know, I understand everyone's got a point of view, but I do think it's important to hear out those folks who have lived in this area, especially this part of Mayfield Heights for a majority of their lives. So I certainly understand the concerns. I do not want to be part of that vocal minority of aged folks, right? So I'm trying to represent the younger demographic. Youngish, I guess you could say, middle-aged, maybe. But just wanted to say, my perspective on this is from a practicality standpoint, I'm not sure other than Mr. Monaco, who else may live in that area. But if that street, Longridge, oh, and by the way, 6396 Eastendale Road, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that. Just from a practicality standpoint, it's very, very hard. Like on the days where we've got the garage sales or what have you, when that part of Longridge gets blocked up, just trying to exit, get to and from the intersection is very, very challenging. And that would be my major concern about this project. If parking were to extend on Longridge, I think that would severely inhibit my ability to get to and from. If there are a decent number of folks there day to day, I know 240 is the average projections. So just wanted to state that. Also, as a parent, we've got a three-year-old. We walk within our community. You know, we walk the streets of Eastendale, Longridge. And I don't foresee us utilizing this type of path if it were to come in. I think that, you know, you can still be a good neighbor and meet folks walking around where we live. There's plenty of open sidewalk space available. And while I would be all for less cyclists on the Boulevard, I agree with the folks who've mentioned, it just doesn't seem like this small little path would take folks off the Boulevard to ride on this path. So I think you've heard a lot of good points from everyone. I appreciate the time that you've given to us to speak this evening and I hope that it all turns out for the best. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Molnar. Justin Burns? Oh, he might be up. There's someone on the phone. Okay. Frank Leoni?
Before I begin, there were a couple other letters sent, the email that wanted to be read. I'm not sure what, who to hand them to, or, okay. These were emails, letters to be read as well? I'm not sure why they were read. Emails were sent? Yeah, that's what we received copies of, I believe. They were sent to Gail, I believe, Alana, Mr. Angelo? I'm Uchi. I believe emails were sent. Yeah, they. Yeah, they said emails were sent to you, so. Just want to provide those copies. Okay. My name is Frank Leoni and I live on 6571 Gates Mills Boulevard. I have lived there for 27 years. And again, please vote no against the trail. There are so many critical questions that still have not been answered for months. Residents and councils have a right to have answers to questions that will impact the safety and community of funding this trail. Why wasn't an independent local traffic and safety study performed by a certified professional firm prior to grant application? TMS is a civil engineering firm. They're not a certified professional firm on traffic and safety. Do you not care about safety? Did you know that RTA travels some roundabout 40 times a day? As well as the multitude of emergency vehicles, commercial and private passenger autos? Hillcrest Hospital is a three-quarters of mile away. It's very busy and very dangerous. I've seen it all. Wrong-way drivers, cars in and out of Sunoco, cars trying to pull out of Woodhawk, east-west, north-south. It's crazy. Okay? Trails are miles and miles long. They don't belong on a three-quarter piece of green space. So why did the grant application omit photos of Sunoco, Sam Center Circle, and the entire Cedar Road and Woodhawk? Of course, because if you did an independent traffic study and safety study, in the beginning, they would have told you, this is not conducive to a trail. It's very dangerous. An onsite inspection by the ODNR has been requested and granted. These are classified as hazards, which has repercussions on the current grant application and all future grants. The grant application states that ADA requirements must be met. You say they are, but how? How will parking be met and be ADA compliant? Do you have anything in writing, anything affirmative? We haven't seen it. We've been asking it for months. Also, as respects the police patrolling the area, I haven't seen a written plan. I've been asking for it for months. We have family members who are police officers and even run cities. So will the trail be closed to dark? What's the extra expense? What research has been done by members of Mayfield City Government on how this will affect Gates Mills Boulevard residents' property values? What independent third-party study has performed has performed to review the parking issues that will overflow onto Longridge, Marshfield, and Kingswood? People will park on Gates Mills Boulevard? The grant application includes hundreds of trees, shrubs, perennials, and 10,000 seed restoration. So what is the annual maintenance budget and detailed written service plan for this trail? The grant application states that it requires a 15-year commitment. There's no mention of a water source for the new vegetation, which is critical in the early years once planted. It's been neglected for years. Residents on Gates Mills and surrounding areas have years of stormwater and sanitary sewer backup issues. You've heard a lot of them call in. What independent third-party company did the city hire to study this problem and how the trail will impact it? The work done in 2021 on Gates Mills Boulevard has not resolved any water issues. When it rains a lot, go Gates Mills Boulevard East, the, right there at the Sam Roundabout, you'll see how much water stands there. What independent third-party company has the city hired to provide an analysis of the cost to upkeep and maintain bioswells? How will COVID, inflation, supply chain shortages impact total costs? What is the total cost to the city and taxpayers? Why don't you know this by now? The grant application states 241 people will use the trail daily. What research and data do you have to support this? City officials told residents that attended the 111821 trail meeting that there were no flashing beacons. Yes?
We need a motion for you to continue. It's been five minutes, so.
Move.
Moved by Mr. DeJohn, seconded by Mr. Mano. I'm sorry. Yes?
Yeah, thank you. City official, city official told residents 111821 trail's made, there'd be no flashing beacons. Flashing beacons are now on the revised plan. Why did you represent, misrepresent this critical change? The letter dated 12121 from a city official sent to residents stated, no signage will be in the median. The grant application states that signage is required, that gives the credit to ODNR. Did you not know about this when the promise was made about no signage? What conversations were held with Knollwood Cemetery as respects to an easement? Not too long ago, Knollwood had to file a lawsuit to allow gas drilling. Why did it take over two months to file a change request summary to the ODNR, moving, removing the amenities? The promises and community engagement surveys had less than 2.5% respondents, period. How many were owner occupied versus those who rent or lease? I've paid taxes for 27 years. Of the less than 25%, of the less than 2.5%, 36% were in favor of trails. Again, there's 20,000 residents. A few residents on Gates Mills who are in favor of the trail stated they do not want any amenities whatsoever. So why did a city official conduct the survey? Shouldn't that have been independent? We have an email from the same city official stating that benches and trashcans will be considered. Listen, residents are told what residents want to hear. From the connectivity study, sidewalks have been impacted by deferred maintenance, which diminishes their value as local pedestrian routes, even if the other primary routes are to be enhanced. How does the city plan to address this? Feedback from public meetings states that safety is the greatest concern for vehicular conflicts as well as unsafe locations. Why was this bypassed and how do you explain the critical feedback? Residents first learned of the trail grant, first learned of the trail grant on 111821, almost 23 months after council voted to submit the grant. Do you know if notice followed federal, state, local communication regulations and ADA compliance? Why did the city wait eight months after the trail grant was awarded to notify and get input from residents? Why would the Pepper Pike mayor include information in this past week's e-newsletter that the Gates Mills Trail would connect the Pepper Pike Trail when the grant wasn't even awarded to Pepper Pike? Why was there no attempt by the city to get early input from residents on Gates Mills Boulevard, who would be directly affected to include in the grant application, even though there were no letters of support from mayors, even though there were letters of support from mayors of Pepper Pike and Village of Gates Mills, who have not approved connectivity? Houses on Gates Mills Boulevard are considered to be historical since they are over 50 years old and eligible for historical preservation funds to be used for upgrades as well as remodeling. How will the trail meet any historical requirements in that grant? Why would the city consider beautification or recreation accessibility at the expense of resident or user's safety? We have way too many questions with no clear answers for months. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leoni. Mrs. Witka? Witka, thank you.
Hi. Can you hear me? Hi. My name is Louva Witka. I'm a resident of Mayfield Heights for 30 years. I live 6608 Kingswood Drive. And I strongly support this trail. When I heard about this and my friend neighbor who love walking, we really strongly support this project. But I'm here more for young lady who is on wheelchair. And she wrote something she want to me to, for you to hear her voice. Julie Witka, 6608 Kingswood Drive. I work full-time, I pay taxes, and I vote. I frequently take walks in my wheelchair, but because there is no sidewalks on Gates Mills, I have to stay in my little Golda Sack. Gates Mills Boulevard as it today is not accessible. Going down the street in my wheelchair, going down the street in my wheelchair is dangerous, is there is a lot of traffic. I have grown up in Mayfield. I love this community. But I feel isolated from it because I physically cannot leave my street independently. The bike trail would be a life changer for me and many others in Gates Mills Boulevard. Area who would prefer or are not able to drive everywhere. It would enable us to access Sam Center Road, East Gate, Golden Gate Plaza, the City Park, Hillcrest, and many other places. It is most certainly not a trail to nowhere. I know there is a concern about accessibility and safety. As a disabled person in a wheelchair user, I will say that the trial, trail proposal meets my needs and I'm very happy with it. Additionally, I would like you all to consider the state of Gates Mills Boulevard today. Is it safe now? Is it accessible now? Cars are constantly dodging runners and bikers. People walking on an even, uneven median are twisting their ankles. Is any of the safe, is it safe or accessible? The bike paths would make the area more safe and more accessible to all Mayfield Heights residents, including residents with disabilities such as myself. I strongly encourage the city council to vote for this bike path. Thank you very much for myself and my daughter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mary Moore?
Hi, my name is Mary Moore and I live at 6583 Gates Mills Boulevard. And I'm not 80 years old. At least, I don't think so. But anyway, I love living on Gates Mills Boulevard. I've been a resident of Mayfield Heights. I don't even know how long. And I'm not opposed to walking or trails or anything like that. I just don't think that this is the place for it. I have a dog that I take to the metro parks all the time and we walk the trails. There's ponds there, there's people biking, you know, meet a lot of people, talk to them. Sometimes I walk my dog on Woodhawk. But I just don't think this is a safe place. Now, my understanding of the trail is it's going to be a kind of a meandering trail. So it's not going to be like straight down the middle of the Boulevard. So if it's a meandering trail, it's going to be close to the curb or to the street. And just to give you some personal experience, there were some tire tracks in front of my house and they were on the median. So I thought to myself, in fact, I took pictures of them if you would like them. Because I thought, well, what, what, did a car go into the median? You know, what happened? Even my neighbors saw them. So I went to take pictures of these tracks and I was crossing the street and I had plenty of time and there was a car coming by. Now, I live very close to the circle, two houses down. So I thought, well, I have plenty of time to cross the street. Well, I don't know if he was speeding up or what. I had to run the short distance to avoid being hit. And that's, that's just what it's like on Gates Mills Boulevard. And then as I was standing in the median and I was, you know, taking pictures of these, these tracks, the cars were flying by me. I felt like I was on the freeway. I'm not kidding. They had to be going 60 miles an hour down that Boulevard. And something really needs to be done about that. And then another experience I've had personally living on the Boulevard is when I want to have parties, I've called the police because there's no place to park, right? And I've said, can I have people park, you know, on the street as long as I let you guys know? You know, so I can entertain. And they said, absolutely not, because those cars barrel around that corner so fast. They're all going to get hit. And I said, well, you know, great. And he said, no, do not, definitely, you can't have people parked by your street. So my other neighbor, not Mr. Leoni, who's also a neighbor, you know where they park their cars when they have a party? Right in the middle of the median. Right in the middle of the median. There's the parking lot. So it's just, I, I just don't think it's. So it's just, I just don't think it's a safe place. I think there's so many unanswered questions, and I was never, nobody ever surveyed me or asked me my opinion. And I just, you know, I'm not against trails or walking or anything like that. I just don't think this is the right place for that. So thank you for your time. Thank you for listening, and I hope you vote against this.
Thank you, Mrs. Moore.
Madam President, can I interrupt this session? I just got a text from a resident that said the live stream is down. Do we know what happened, why the live stream is down?
We are aware that it's down. We did try to troubleshoot, and we're unable to get it back up.
Yeah, so I saw Shanisha was back there, so.
Yes, she was trying to fix, and we were not able to get it back up.
Thank you.
Thank you. But this is tape, the tape is still working, so, okay. And then I'll have to air that.
Can somebody get an audio of the meeting then?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Vanessa Meek.
My name is Vanessa Meek, and my family and I live at 6564 Kingswood Drive. We love our street, we love our neighbors. We are also very active and try to get outside as much as possible. Because there are no sidewalks or path in the median on Gates Mills Boulevard, yes.
Can you, since you have the mask on, could you just speak like closer to the mic?
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
We would love to be able to expand our distance by walking the new proposed trail that's planned for the median on Gates Mills Boulevard.